If you would all take your seats, we're going to begin. And would Carly Simler and Caitlin Simler please come forward? Caitlin and Carly are grade five students at Lake Street School and they graciously agreed to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Caitlin, thank you Carly. Having you all taken your seats, I will ask you to rise again as we listen to and join in if you wish to Christiane Lee and Avery Kinney sing the Star Spangled Banner. Thank you ladies.
Oh say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the pallid sky Were the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh say does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home
Bravo ladies, wonderful. Thank you so much Christiane and thank you very much Avery. Good evening. Welcome to this evening of awards given by the Board of Education. This is a very special night for the Board of Education. You know, sometimes they're a little bit removed from our students because they work so very hard and mostly in the evening and certainly have other day jobs. They truly love this evening and we do have another evening in the fall, in November, where we have superintendent's awards and other awards that have been given in the fall. And so the Board truly loves this night. They get to see students, give them their awards, and they know that our students are working hard and that all of these awards are well, well deserved. So without further ado, we will begin. Thank you. And I'm going to introduce our Board of Education, excuse me, I apologize. We have our Chair, Mrs. Anne Fisher. We have Board of Education member Steve Linton. Board of Education Secretary Laura Bush. Board of Education Member David Kemp. Board of Education Member Michelle Arnn. And our two student representatives, absolutely wonderful, we're delighted. This is Olivia and Erin who have been working very hard all year. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Fisher, would you come forward with the first awards, please? The first couple of awards take a couple of minutes longer than others, but they are very, very important. I would ask Hannah Steed and Matthew Vilms, if they are in the audience, if they would come forward, please? Each year, the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education offers our Vernon Board an opportunity to present leadership awards to grade 12 students and to grade 8 students. These students have incredible leadership, great scholastic ability, and service to others. And we are very, very pleased to announce that our two high school winners are Hannah and Matthew. Hannah has always taken tasks very seriously, she attacks them with purpose. She has a ready smile, an infectious optimism that draws people to her and sets them at ease. She was the team captain for varsity soccer during her senior year and both junior and senior year captain of the basketball team. She's a member of SNAP and SNAP is Students Seeking New Ideas Positively, and Peer Advocates. She's also a driving force behind the RHS Dodgeball Tournament and Volleyball Lock-In. She played an integral role last fall in our benefit concert, or this past year in our benefit concert that was held for two of our students here at Rockville High School. She put everything in place to raise money for that event and also got the community involved, the community at large. She's always enthusiastic and lends a helping hand. She plans to pursue a career in education. Hannah, did you decide where you're going?
Going to Eastern.
Going to Eastern Connecticut State University in Wyndham. We're quite delighted. Matthew Vilms ranks fifth in the class of 254. He's earned high honors every quarter of his high school career, so for those of you who are not seniors yet in this audience, please take that in mind and remember that over the next few years. He is a member of the National Honor Society, he's been president of his class for three years. He's a student representative for the New England Association of Schools and Colleges when they visited a year ago, and for the Wall of Honor Committee. He's involved in many RHS clubs, including SNAP, same as Hannah, Peer Advocates, Link Crew, and the Interact Club, that's the Youth Rotary Club. Excellence, he has received lots of awards, Excellence in Earth Science, Civic Foods, Pre-Calculus. He's won awards for young artists and writers, the Getty Book Award, and has volunteered his time for many, many activities in the community and outside of the community as well. Matthew is looking at majoring in Media Arts or Digital Media, and did you decide?
UConn.
University of Connecticut is Matthew's choice. Our Vernon Center Middle School Cape Leadership Awards are going to Joseph Santiago Campos and Anna Gabrelli-Luckhard. If they would both come down, please? It doesn't look like either. Joseph? No? These students are also well, well deserving. If they do show up and someone sees them, please give me a nudge, give me a high five up here and I will repeat the awards in a little while. Would Dominique Moore, Katherine Cutting, and Daniel Wheeler please come to the podium? Oh, we've got a high five. We got... Anna? Dominique Moore, Katherine Cutting, and Daniel Wheeler. This is Katherine Cutting. And Katherine is receiving a Connecticut Association of Schools Connecticut Interscholastic Athletic Conference Scholar-Athlete Award. These awards are given to students with no less than a 3.5 cumulative average, as someone who has participated in at least two CIA sports a minimum of two years. Also exhibited outstanding school and community service and possessing high levels of integrity, self-discipline, courage, and personal standards that serve as a model for others. Is Erin Brownell here? Gabriel Rogan and Andrew Staycheck. The American Regions Mathematics League is a statewide competition that serves to choose students who will represent our state at regionals. It's called ARMOL, if I remember from my math teacher days. Andrew and Gabriel were among the top 45 scorers in the state competition and they are representing Connecticut. And they probably already have represented Connecticut at Penn, correct? How'd you do?
I did alright. Our team did pretty well. Twenty-six out of about 150.
Twenty-six out of 150, our teams. They represent Connecticut as a team. Would I, would you decide where you're going?
I'm going to Boston College.
Boston College for Gabriel?
University of Connecticut.
UConn.
For digital media.
Digital media, that seems popular. Thank you, Mrs. Fisher, we'll call you back up again. And Mrs. Bush, would you come forward, please? To help us out. The Connecticut Association of Schools provides awards to students who excel in either the performing or the visual arts. The students must also have scholarship and leadership, so we will share these students. Would Emily Seekins and Abraham Caddie please come forward? Emily Seekins has received her award for the visual arts. The Maine College of Art in Portland, so we have an artist. Congratulations Emily. Thank you. The Connecticut's Glass of Arts Awards are given to Rockville High School students. And so would the following students please come forward? Anna McCain, Rachel Shane, Dylan Pelletier, Igor Bialik, Emily Seekins, Heather Busquet, Kaylee Nicholas, and Taylor Fornier, Gabriel Rogan, Joshua Chaffey, and Brianna Tedford. And I'll call your name and tell what you're receiving the award for and if you would let Mrs. Bush know so she knows who you are. Anna McCain in Ceramics and Glass, a gold key. Rachel Shane in Ceramics and Glass, honorable mention. Dylan Pelletier in Digital Art, a gold key. Igor Bialik, Digital Art, honorable mention. These are all our older students. Emily Seekins, Design, Silver Key. Heather Busquet, Portfolio, Gold Key, and the Hartford Art School Award. Kaylee Nicholas, Ceramics and Glass, a gold key. Taylor Fornier in Photography, a gold key, the Blit Art Material Best in Photography Award. Gabriel Rogan, Photography Honorable Mention. Joshua Chaffey, Photography Honorable Mention. And Brianna Tedford, Photography Honorable Mention. Congratulations to all of you. We are also having two awards at our middle school for Scholastic Arts. Would Rayana Smith and Kelly Guerrero please come forward? Rayana Smith and Kelly Guerrero? Each year, the Connecticut Association of Schools provides awards to those students who have excelled in visual or performing arts and have exhibited high levels of citizenship and cooperation. And these awards are given to fifth graders. So we have two from each of our schools receiving these awards. So would Ava Ward and Paul Denning, Mrs. Bush? Ava Ward and Paul Denning, and Ava is receiving the award for the visual arts and Paul is receiving the award for the performing arts. Center Road School. From Lake Street School, would Alexandra Dionne and Alexandra Kaminsky please come forward? Alexandra Kaminsky is in grade five at Lake Street and is receiving her award for the performing arts. Congratulations Alexandra. Maple Street School with Selena Coletti and Samuel Wheeler, please come forward. Samuel Wheeler in grade five at Maple Street School is receiving his award for the performing arts. Olivia Turtelot and Mariah Shivers, please come down. Shivers? This is Mariah Shivers and she's in grade five at Northeast School. She's receiving her award for the performing arts. Congratulations Mariah. And from Skinner Road School, would Emily Collins and Sarah Cove please come forward? Thank you, Mrs. Bush. Mr. Linton? Our students audition and compete to get into regional music festivals at many levels, voice and instrument. So right first, we have the 2014 Connecticut Eastern Region Music Festival for Rockville High School. Would the following students please come forward? Abraham Caddie, Sarah Linton, Maria Meyer, Jacqueline Oss, Olivia Whitehead, Ryan Bleek, Erin Brownell, Sierra Buckley, Tatiana Demovski, Lauren Honan, Avery Kinney, Christiane Lee, Dominique Moore, Jenna Sunderland. Abraham Caddie is receiving his award for Trumpet. Sarah Linton for Clarinet. Maria Meyer, flute. Jacqueline Oss, Alto Sax. Olivia Whitehead, Philharmonic Sax. Jazz band rehearsal tonight. Ryan Bleek, Violin. Erin Brownell, Soprano. Lauren Honan, Soprano. Avery Kinney, Soprano. We've all been witness to why they both get into Eastern Regionals. Dominique Moore, Alto. And Jenna Sunderland, Alto. Thank you and congratulations. Ms. Arnn, would you join Mr. Linton, please? Thank you. We were also very pleased and honored to have four students and make the Eastern Regional Festival music for our middle school students. Would the following students please come forward? Sabrina Bailey, Holly Fisher, Emily Linton, and Kylie Percy. Sabrina Bailey made the chorus, congratulations Sabrina. Holly Fisher is in the chorus. Emily Linton in the band, the Alto Sax. And Kylie Percy, also in the band, Clarinet. And would us, thank you all very much, would Sierra Buckley please come forward? Sierra, not only made the Eastern Regionals, she made the All-State as an Alto voice. Our World Language students participate in contests to see how well they know the language and how well they can speak. We have one student who excelled in the National French Exam that was taken in March, Manane Adoy. Is Manane here? I hope I've said her name correctly. And his name, and he placed fourth in the state and seventh in the nation in French Three. So we are very, very honored that he is one of our students and very proud. Thank you. Twenty-eight of our students took the National Spanish Exam in April. Four of those students did place an honorable mention, if the four of them would come up, please. Brianna Flint, Zachary Malouf, Cassandra Shambach, and Trevor Siders. Brianna Flint is grade 12. Zachary Malouf, grade 11. Cassandra Shambach, grade 11. Trevor Siders, grade 11. Thank you very much, congratulations. Has Erin Brownell arrived? Okay, thank you. We also had students who received the Excellence in French Awards. If these students would come forward, please. Riley Affett, Monica Boldak, Maggie Getford, Alex Hasselberger, Madeline Hearn, Lauren Honan, and Tyler Rodriguez. Riley Affett, grade 11. Monica Boldak, grade 9. Maggie Getford, grade 10. Alex Hasselberger, grade 12. Madeline Hearn's, grade 9. Lauren Honan, grade 9. And Tyler Rodriguez, grade 9. Congratulations. The following students please come forward. Sophia Lee, Sarah Linton, Stephanie Murtha, and Cheyenne West. These four students received the Excellence in German Awards. We have a very strong German program with an exchange with a town in Germany, another school. Sophia Lee in grade 9. Sarah Linton, grade 10. Stephanie Murtha, grade 11. And Cheyenne West, grade 11. Congratulations. The following students please come forward. Amanda Colombo, Kylie Carney, Eric Nato, Janaleen Negron, Spencer Paget, Cassandra Shambach, Lindsay Tarro, and Timothy Trimmer. These students are receiving the Excellence in Spanish Awards. Amanda Colombo is grade 11. Kylie Carney, grade 10. Eric Nato, grade 12. Janaleen Negron, grade 10. Spencer Paget, grade 11. Cassandra Shambach, grade 11. Lindsay Tarro, grade 9. And Timothy Trimmer, grade 12. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Linton. Ms. Arnn, if you would help us, please? Thank you so much. The Connecticut Council of Language Teachers presents awards for excellence, both at the middle school level and the high school level every year to our students. Students must have a greater than 90% average. They must participate outside of class as well as inside class. So in other words, really value the language, so they either are in a club or participate in another way, outside of the classroom. Would the following middle school students please come forward? Taiba Batul, Sarah Bernabucci, Erin Chaffey, Aman Hamid, Erwa Hamid, Ashley Markounis, Christopher McAuliffe, Ryan McGraal, Joshua Nicholas. Taiba Batul's in grade 8. Sarah Bernabucci, grade 7. Erin Chaffey, grade 8. Aman Hamid, grade 7. Irma Hamid, grade 8. Ashley Markounis, grade 8. Christopher McAuliffe, grade 7. Ryan McGraal, grade 7. And Joshua Nicholas, grade 7. There are still more for the same award. Would the following students please come forward? Kylie Percy, Jake Putry, Karina Putnam, Shayna Reel, Sidney Rischmeyer, Arundip Singh, Julia Soma, Lexie Thornton, Robert Tierney, Martha Wisniak, and Dennis Zhu. Kylie Percy is in grade 7. Jake Putry, grade 7. Karina Putnam, grade 7. Shayna Reel, grade 8. Sidney Rischmeyer, grade 8. Arundip Singh, grade 7. Julia Soma, grade 7. Lexie Thornton, grade 7. Robert Tierney, grade 8. Martha Wisniak, grade 8. Dennis Zhu, grade 7. Thank you and congratulations. Would the following students from Rockville High School please come forward? This is also for an Award of Excellence from the Connecticut Council of Language Teachers. Sierra Buckley, Keith Callahan, Alyssa Dal Sandro, Alicia Dillman, Asia Shoavera, Shoavaria, excuse me, Paul Jeffers, Hannah Johnston, Megan Hasty, Michelle Harlock, Megan Lucal. Our Excellence in World Language. Keith Callahan, grade 9. Alyssa Dal Sandro, grade 10. Alicia Dillman, grade 11. Asia Shoavaria, grade 11. Hannah Johnston, grade 9. Megan Hasty, grade 9. Michelle Harlock, grade 9. The following Rockville High School students please come forward for their language award. Brianna Markounis, Haley Mistrata, Brett Montmaney, Janaleen Negron, Hannah Ramsdell, Renee Rogan, Spencer Paget, Cassandra Shambach, Andrew Samar, Vivian Yufangjean, and Kenny Zhang. For Excellence in World Language, Brianna Markounis, grade 10. Haley Mistrata, grade 11, grade 10, excuse me. Brett Montmaney, grade 11. Janaleen Negron, grade 10. Hannah Ramsdell, grade 9. Renee Rogan, grade 10. Spencer Paget, grade 11. Cassandra Shambach, grade 11. Andrew Samar, grade 10. Vivian Yufangjean, grade 10. Kenny Zhang, grade 10. As a student of the Spanish language and Hispanic cultures for her outstanding achievement at Vernon Center Middle School, Kimberly McGuire. Mr. Kemp, if you would please help us. Thank you. And I would also like to invite up... We are now going to do the Creative Writing Awards, which is a... A shining gem at Rockville High School. The writing that comes out of our high school is absolutely phenomenal. We are quite pleased and very, very proud of the hard work our students put in it. But we are also exceptionally honored to have one of our incredible English teachers here with us this evening, but we're also honored that she chooses us to work with every single day. I'm going to come up one page at a time because Ms. Nordland has something special for each student as well. So would the following students please come forward? Ashley Adams. Whitney Adjemen. Catherine Bartol. Matthew Vilms. Ryan Leek. Julia Bonnades. And Michaela Racefield. Ashley Adams is in grade 11. She is receiving the Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Gold Key Honorable Mention for short story and poetry. Whitney Adjemen, grade 11. The Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Silver Key Honorable Mention in Poetry and Memoir. And she was selected to attend the New England Young Writers' Conferences at Middlebury College. She's been published in Connecticut Student Writer Nonfiction and published in Susquehanna University Literary Magazine, The Apprentice Writer. Congratulations, Miss Aron. Catherine Bartol, grade 12. Catherine is receiving a Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Honorable Mention for Memoir. Catherine Vilms, grade 12. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award, three Silver Keys, three Honorable Mentions, short for short stories, science fiction, humor, and poetry. Ryan Leek, grade 12. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award, four Gold Keys, six Honorable Mentions for poetry, science fiction, persuasive writing, journalism, and writing portfolio. He's a Connecticut Student Writer Essay winner, the Edith Wharton Writing Competition winner, published in Connecticut Student Writer for Nonfiction, and he's a Presle... Sorry about that. Literary Arts Magazine Superior Award. How do you say that word? Julia Bonnades, grade 12. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Gold Key, four Honorable Mentions in Poetry. Hartford Stages Write On Play Contest. Eugene O'Neill Playwriting Contest, top finalist. Brave New Voices Connecticut Slam Team finalist. And Hartford Stage participant in Project Transform. Michaela Racefield, grade 11. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Silver Key in Poetry. Nancy Thorpe Poetry Honorable Mention. So congratulations also to Michaela. Would the following students please come forward? Emily Berg. Caitlin Burke. Mallory Chabray. Brian Dukas. Brianna Flint. Gillian Foley. Taylor Fornier. Erin Ganyu. Alyssa Gunther. And Caitlin Hennessy. Emily Berg is in grade 12. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Silver Key Honorable Mention in Dramatic Script and Poetry. Connecticut Student Writer Honorable Mention in Poetry. And the Drexel National Playwriting Competition, third place winner. Congratulations, Emily. Caitlin Burke also in grade 12. The Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Silver Key for Short Story. Mallory Chabray, grade 10. Fresh New Voices Sunken Garden Poetry Contest finalist and a Connecticut Young Writers' State finalist. Brian Dukas, grade 12. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Silver Key for Short Story. Brianna Flint, grade 12. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Gold Key, two Silver Keys, and two Honorable Mentions in Poetry. Gillian Foley, grade 10. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Honorable Mention, Short Story. Taylor Fornier, grade 12. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Gold Key Honorable Mention, Short Story, Poetry. Connecticut Young Writers' State finalist. Erin Ganyu, grade 11. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Silver Key Honorable Mention, Short Story. Selected to attend the New England Young Writers' Conferences at Middlebury College and the Poetry Out Loud School Champion. Alyssa Gunther, grade 12. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award, two Honorable Mentions in Poetry. The Presle Literary Arts Magazine Superior Award. Congratulations, Alyssa. Caitlin Hennessy, grade 11. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Honorable Mention, Short Story. The following... Thank you very much and congratulations. Would the following students please come forward? Michael Kalensik. Kylie Carney. Brendan Kennedy. Brianna Alaski. Lauren Ladalupe. Christiane Lee. Joan Look. Matthew Maguda. And Zachary Malouf. Michael Kalensik, grade 12. The Fresh New Voices Sunken Garden Poetry Contest finalist. Congratulations, Michael. Kylie Carney, grade 10. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Silver Key for Poetry and Connecticut Young Writers' State finalist. Congratulations, Michael. Brendan Kennedy, grade 12. Brave New Voices Connecticut Slam Team finalist and Hartford Stage participant in Project Brianna Alaski, grade 11. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Silver Key, Short Story. Lauren Ladalupe, grade 12. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award, two Silver Keys, Flash Fiction, Short Story. Christiane Lee, grade 12. Deep breath. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award, five Silver Keys, Honorable Mention, Poetry, Writing Portfolio, Dramatic Script. The Edith Wharton Writing Competition Honorable Mention for Poetry. Fresh New Voices Sunken Garden Poetry Contest finalist. Drexel National Playwriting Competition, first place winner. Connecticut Drama Association with an Original Play, third place winner. RHS Poetry Out Loud Alternate. Published in the Aerie International Journal and the Presle Literary Arts Magazine Superior Award. Thank you very much. Oh, I just said I should be on Matthew. I'm sorry. Now I'm thinking here. Joan Look, grade 12. I apologize. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Honorable Mention, Science Fiction. Matthew Maguda, grade 11. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Silver Key Poetry. Connecticut Young Writers' State finalist. Zachary Malouf, grade 11. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Honorable Mention, Short Story. Now, congratulations and thank you very much. Would the following students please come forward? Michelle Maganello. Robin Morrell. Benjamin Nutt. Jacqueline Oss. Deanna Pellegrino. Gabriel Rogan. Cassandra Schombach. Winona Schuff. Shayla Schumberger. And Trevor Siders. Michelle Maganello, grade 12. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Silver Key Honorable Mention for Humor and Short Story. Robin Morrell, grade 11. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Honorable Mention for Poetry. Benjamin Nutt, grade 11. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award, two Honorable Mentions, Science Fiction and Fantasy. Jacqueline Oss, grade 12. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award, two Gold Keys, Silver Key Honorable Mention in Writing Portfolio, Poetry, Short Story, Science Fiction. Arista Short Story Contest finalist. It's All Write Short Story Competition. Edith Wharton Writing Competition Honorable Mention. Published in Aerie International Journal and Presle Literary Arts Magazine Superior Award. Congratulations, Jackie. Deanna Pellegrino, grade 11. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Silver Key Honorable Mention in Poetry. Gabriel Rogan, grade 12. Presle Literary Arts Magazine Superior Award. Cassandra Schombach, grade 11. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award, two Silver Keys, Poetry, Short Story. Hartford Stage Write On Competition winner. Congratulations to Cassandra. Winona Schuff, grade 10. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Honorable Mention, Short Story. Shayla Schumberger, grade 12. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Silver Key Honorable Mention, Writing Portfolio and Winona thanks you twice. Congratulations, Shayla. Trevor Siders, grade 11. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Honorable Mention in Poetry. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. I'm going to ask Mrs. Fisher to come back up if we could. I'm going to ask Mrs. Fisher to come. Thank you so much. The following students please come forward. Brendan Shannon. Connor Sloot. Melissa Smajovic. Lily Vartanian. Jethsenia Walker. Samantha Westwood. And Kelsey Wilson. Brendan Shannon, grade 12. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Silver Key, Short Story. Connor Sloot, grade 12. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Silver Key Honorable Mention in Poetry and Writing Melissa Smajovic, grade 10. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award, two Silver Keys, Poetry and Short Story. Connecticut Student Writer Honorable Mention in Poetry. Congratulations, Michael. Lily Vartanian, grade 10. The Edith Wharton Writing Competition Honorable Mention. Jethsenia Walker, grade 12. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Honorable Mention, Short Story. Samantha Westwood, grade 10. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award Honorable Mention, Short Story. Congratulations, Samantha. Kelsey Wilson, grade 12. Scholastic Arts and Writing Award, two Silver Keys, Short Story. Congratulations. Would Carly Simler please come forward? Carly Simler is in grade 5 and will certainly be one of Ms. Nordland's future stars in her class. She's in grade 5 at Lake Street School. She's one of the two children who led us in the Pledge of Allegiance earlier. She was with her sister. She has received the Connecticut Student Writers' Magazine Honorable Mention for a prose piece in grade 5, so we congratulate her on her initiative and the writing. One of our students who earlier was not able to make it. I know we have practices and all kinds of things going on today. Brett Motmaney in grade 11 for our World Language Award. Brett, if you are here now, would you would come forward? We'd appreciate that. Brett is receiving the Connecticut Council of Language Teachers Award for Excellence in World Language, and we congratulate him. He's in grade 11. Congratulations, Brett. The following students please come forward. Austin Badaran. Taylor La Genes. Laura Ladalupe. Caitlin Major. Mary Shane. And Daniel Wheeler. Students attend our very own magnet school, the vocational agriculture program that we have right here at Rockville High School. It's an incredibly intensive program, courses that prepare these students for the world, college, or career, or whatever they're going to be interested in. And so as a special recognition, these are two of our seniors. The others could not make it tonight, but I'll call their names once again. Austin Badaran. Taylor La Genes. Lauren Ladalupe. Caitlin Major. Mary Shane. And Daniel Wheeler. The Vernon Board of Education works very hard because they want every student in this town to succeed. They are so proud of everyone here and all of the efforts of our students who were not able to make it tonight and are... or did not receive an award. Our efforts are certainly valiant and well-heeded. So on behalf of the Vernon Board of Education, I do congratulate you on all of your achievements. Parents, I congratulate you. You are the ones that bring your children this far and get them prepared for life. So this is indeed a night for you to say, "Great job." So congratulations to everyone. We do have refreshments in the lobby, so that if you would like to say... I know board members would love to visit with you in the lobby. Me too. So thank you all so much for coming.